All right, good evening and welcome to the October 28th Tuolton City Council Work Session. Tonight, we lead off with our Part Three of our Urban Renewal Education Series, led by Jonathan and Elaine. Thanks for coming back.
All right.
We didn't scare you away yet.
So Halloween.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jonathan Kelly. I'm the Economic Development Manager. Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting is our consultant on urban renewal-related issues for the city of Tuolton. We are going to recap, um, the last two sessions that occurred since April.
And there'll be a quiz for Valerie?
There will not be multiple choice. And, uh, and then-
We will delve right into some more specific action and items tonight. Uh, so, just a brief recap, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the process for closing down Tuolton's two urban renewal districts, both the Central Urban Renewal District and the Lebanon Tax Increment District. And I'll let you take over session, the recap.
So the first session we had was just to do a basic Urban Renewal 101. So we talked about urban renewal law and how urban renewal works, and we did a review of what the roles of the urban renewal district, what the roles of the district are, and what the roles of the city council are in that. Session Two, we talked about an overview of Tuolton's two urban renewal districts, and their history and their current assets. And all of you should be up to speed on that, except for Councillor Pratt. And if at any point you want me to step back a step, um, just feel free to raise your hand and solicit help. So the Tuolton Development Commission is, uh, the city's urban renewal agency. And what we're looking for tonight are decisions on what the options are for the two urban renewal areas, and what the priority focus areas are for the remaining funds. There is a specific closure process. That is to, number one, decide if you want to do any additional projects, and if so, to amend the plan to include those specific projects into the plan. And depending on what those projects are, there are three different levels of amendments in your urban renewal plans, a minor amendment, a council-approved amendment, or a substantial amendment. I don't think we're looking at a substantial amendment for either district, so they would either be a, uh, agency-approved amendment, which is done by a resolution, or a council-approved amendment, and those are done, are required if the project is a project that wasn't otherwise defined in your original plan, or those goals and objectives that were there don't really cover that kind of a project. You then, um, could spend the funds after you designate the project. And then you close down the district. To go close down a district, it takes the action of your Tuolton Development Commission. By resolution, you may close the district. Neither of your two districts, um, just for the new city council, are taking any tax increment proceeds from division of taxes. So the money that they have now is money that's in the fund. It's not money that's coming annually through, um, receipts from the assessor's office. When you close down the district, you also have to decide what to do with the development, with the Tuolton Development Commission-owned properties within that, and then see if there are any other council actions that are needed, given what you've decided to do. These are your two, um, two districts. They're both very discreet and fairly small in terms of the overall context of the city. The Central Urban Renewal Area's purpose was to alleviate conditions of blight and create a sense of place in the downtown. Its main goal was to strengthen the social and economic development of Central Tuolton by stabilizing and improving property values, eliminating existing blight and preventing future blight, and there were 11 sub-goals. You can look at the two pictures here that show the main effort, which was around creating that sense of place and a downtown core area. The 11s, oh, we didn't have them here, go ahead.
No, uh, so if you want to know the 11 sub-goals, I can tell you what they are, or you can look at that large document that I attached. But like, for some of them is civic development, housing, industrial development, traffic, transportation, and green space, to name a few.
The assets left for the Central Urban Renewal District are fairly nominal compared to the other districts. So you have, uh, $121,430 as of June 30th, 2019. And the staff's recommendation to you is to be quick and strategic. And I think, in other words, let's decide what we're going to do and move on. So, we can look at that amount of money and decide, um, the next slide, I think, what some options are, and did you want to cover that?
Yep. So, uh, based on the last two sessions, and also working with our internal stakeholders, and kind of outreach to the community in general, um, with our suggestion of staff being quick and strategic, we've come up with two potential options that we might see beneficial that council could decide on tonight. So option one is future URA planning, which is urban renewal area planning and feasibility. So this option would take all monies and transfer those to an administrative fund for future use. Um, we currently do have a TDC administrative fund currently active, so that wouldn't require a creation of that. The future funds would be dedicated to the feasibility studies of future URA areas, because urban renewal is a tool, and we want to give council as much option as possible regarding the city footprint of a potential district. And then, based on best practices, we would transfer all properties to city ownership. Um, we have currently 11 properties that the TDC currently owns and operates. Some of those would be looked at of permanent transfer to the city, which include parking, um, if the council and the Development Commission sees fit. But then, if at a later point, you wish to develop these properties as a commission or transfer those into a future URA area, those properties can be transferred back to the TDC for future development. So a potential timeline on option one is we would identify that option, which would be tonight. Potential resolutions could be before you, uh, no sooner than December 2019. And then we could officially close the district, uh, as soon as December 2019. And then afterwards, we'll, um, talk, you know, we'll discuss what those options and what council looks for. The second option would be curd enhancements. This is a limited pot of money, which doesn't go a long way in the grand scheme of things. But, a couple of things that both council and internal stakeholders have identified are tree great replacements, um, the common signage lighting, which is at the intersection of Martinozzi and Boons Ferry across from Fred Meyer, uh, the Hannigan Lot paving, uh, sweet drive sidewalks, a potential movement of TriMet bus stop, the ONA pedestrian crossing, potential trail connections, and contribute this money to the Nyberg widening. The potential option, number two timeline, would be, we would identify this option, which would be around winter of 2020. We would have to amend plans to include whichever project the Development Commission and city council identified. We would reduce the district to project areas in order to increase the future footprint for future URA areas. A potential completion of these projects would be around spring of 2021. And then, obviously, would, we would close the districts upon project completion. So, we're gonna open that up, and Elaine's gonna facilitate, uh, this part of the process. But are there any discussions, questions, and direction regarding Central Urban Renewal District?
Questions? Valerie?
On the potential projects, um, I'm assuming that like widening Martinozzi is gonna cost more than $120,000. But I was wondering on that, the one that kind of interests me is the TriMet, moving the TriMet bus stop. And my idea was it'd be really nice where, um, we're gonna potentially have the Affordable Housing Crossment Bank having one there, but I didn't know if that had been identified, where that would be moved to, and what the estimated cost would be, just a rough estimate.
So, so Jeff is not here tonight, and this was one of the projects that he identified? This is not a project that is off the table if this monies aren't contributed to it? That's a project in the grand scheme of things, and this money could help that process. So, I'm not too familiar with where the exact location of that bus stop would go, but this would be a drop in the bucket, I'm assuming, for that type of project?
Other questions? Paul?
So, to follow up on Councillor Pratt's, um, question, are you referring on a TriMet stop to a full, like, a pull-out stop, so that it's actually housed an area to go to that's not blocking the roadway? Are you, is this just, what, what exactly are you defining as a TriMet stop?
I believe that this refers to an idea that has been floated to do a pull-out behind the library off of Lower Boons Ferry. And I, we're not sure of the, the complete feasibility of it, but, um, TriMet has definitely floated that, um, a year or so ago. And, um, so, we put it up here 'cause it's in the, in the district, and if that were to come to fruition, we could contribute towards that. But, again, there's a lot of, um, I believe that there's a lot of, um, a lot of dynamics before that could happen, but I, I believe that that's what it's referring to, is a pull-out right behind the library.
But what, and then what about going, um, what would that be, southbound? Going, would you put one, as Councillor Pratt said, on the other side of the roadway as well?
No.
Can we require, if, if, and I know it's a huge big if, well, there has been one conversation about, um, building over there, could that be a requirement of the builder to, um, put in a pull-out?
Well, um, there is a stop right in front of that.
Right.
There is an existing stop right in front of that, um-
But it's not a pull, it's not a, I don't, pull-out's not the right word.
I, I understand, but no, it's not a pull.
Now, when I need Councillor Davis, where is she? But, so, over on that side, is that something that could be required by the, as the planning? If, if something actually developed in there, could there be a requirement that a, that that be an improvement to that area when they build, or is that not something-
We'd have to work with TriMet, um, on, on that, but, uh, potentially, sure.
Okay, and then, um, my, my next one goes back to the funding issue. When you talk about future, um, URA planning, would that be for any district? So you can just set the money aside, and even though the money was generated from District One, you can use it to begin a study on a District Five? I mean, you know, something that's never been talked about before?
This was asked in a prior meeting, and we did ask your legal counsel to review, because I had looked at that statute before, and the way the statute is written, it states that you can use it for urban renewal district planning. And so, your legal counsel did review, and do you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, there's no clear answer, you know, there's no cases or anything like that. So, so I think the, the answer is yes, it can be used to study, uh, urban renewal planning, you know, city-wide, and wherever locations the city is looking to do that.
Other questions? Robert?
Thanks for the presentation. Um, so, can you go back to the potential project options? So, I looked through those, and even though the descriptions are pretty general, I don't see anything in there from a policy perspective that has to happen tomorrow. Uh, and so my preference would be if the money can be used to plan other districts, and presuming there's not money available now to plan those districts, is that right? I mean, now you said the fund was effective, but is it a zero balance, or?
So in fairness, we do actually have, uh, $89,000 on the current TDC administrative fund that you could utilize as a commission, but we also use that for other economic development-related expenses. And so, we would be able to transfer $121,000 to that 89 and do broader.
Okay, and do we have even a ballpark estimate on what those consulting administrative costs-
That was my question.
For looking at new urban renewal districts, and I realize that's an open-ended scope, but-
That is, and it really depends on how much pre-planning you need to do. So for an example, the city of Cornelius, last year I worked on a project with them that was funded by Metro. It was a little under $300,000, but they did a lot of pre-planning work on that. They developed a whole town center plan, and they did a lot of public input. And then, we did the urban renewal portion, the implementation. So typically, uh, if you're going to do a feasibility study and an urban renewal plan, it's somewhere between $55,000 and $60,000 for those components. So if you're going to do other visioning work or planning work along with that, then that increases the cost.
Okay. So that sort of solidifies my answer. I think the best moving and administrative standpoint would be to close the current district, obviously keep these projects on the list, because I can only presume that future urban renewal areas will still include portions of, uh, the Commons and then the city center, um, but at least that's, that's my two cents.
Other comments? Robert had the same question I did about, you know, your average, um, cost to do once, to do in a study. You know, in my eight years prior to being mayor, the, you know, common joke was it's usually $30,000 for a project. That's the starting point, so, when you said 50 to 60, so it's in the ballpark. You know, we've all talked about, and we've heard from constituents about, you know, there are certain areas in town they'd like to have redeveloped, re-revisioned. And we hear about the Commons a lot, that, you know, the Commons have, um, aged, and our population has changed, and the needs in the area have changed, and a lot of possibilities are out there now that, um, could drastically change that area and make it a very vibrant downtown area. So, uh, my opinion is, I agree with Robert, is from me, I'd rather do option one, to have money in the bank to do these feasibility and to do the planning, 'cause option two, a lot of these aren't super expensive, or the $120,000 really doesn't get, get you that far. Uh, but that's my opinion, so what do other folks think? So we got two.
Got me.
Y'all talk? I was waiting for you to talk.
I, I agree with you guys. I, um, I was saying the other day that there's, we, our city feels like the, where a lot, when a lot of it was built, it feels like a place from the 1990s, and I feel, in some ways, right? And I feel like, um, there's different needs now, and there's, as we keep growing and expanding, there's going to be even more. And, um, to kind of do some things that are more of a full-scale planning and project for the needs of today and our future seems like a good investment to me. Even though I like light poles.
Paul?
So, I'm, I'm looking at option two, the curd enhancements, which is one of the things that's on the table, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, the only, the, well, the TriMet bus stop apparently can be covered in other ways. ONA pedestrian crossing, I think we have that, or should have that covered from a different funding source. Uh, Nyberg widening, we've already discussed about that, that's also in the moving forward. I don't know what tree great replacements is, and I don't know what the Hannigan Lot paving is, but it seems like the Hannigan Lot paving was not something that should come out of this fund, unless I'm misunderstanding exactly what we're paving.
Hannigan Lot is the gravel lot, uh, by the Red Lot. It's across the street from the West Station. Um, there's a gravel-
Right, okay.
Lot where the, um- The Poo Poo Shack set-up shop.
Right, but that's, is that city-owned property or private property?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's city-owned property, then wouldn't that also be covered under, um, I think we have a couple of different funds, don't we, that could be used to pave that lot if we decided to pave it?
Well, it's Development Commission-owned.
Okay, oh, so it would restrict-
So it is Development Commission-owned, and it'd be a lot more than $120,000 to pave the lot. And, in my opinion, that, that there should be some planning around what should go. Do we need another parking lot there, or do we want to re-envision that?
Or do we want to lease it to the Poo Poo Shack and have them improve the lot?
Violate your ordinance.
I forget, I said, here I was on a really good path of walking us down where we need to be, and then I'd, uh- The only thing that, on here, that, um, that really interests me is the sweet drive sidewalks, because of, of, and that's been something, you know, I've been pushing for a long time on Graham's Ferry Road, where it's not complete, and there's a couple of other areas. I know Tigard is really concerned about an area over, as you just come into Tuolton, there's an area that, and it just seems like there has to be a way to figure out how to put sidewalks in that aren't there. But I think that's a discussion, you know, for another day. And so I, I would tend to agree with, with Councillor Kellogg and, and the mayor that, um, putting the money into, what is it, option?
Yeah, option one.
Thank you. Option one would be, um, the thing to do, because, again, lack of any significant funds to do something that you could actually spend some money on. And it would give us some seed money. I believe there is, and we talked about it at our, whatever it's called, last year, and that we're coming up on this year in January, that there's a couple of big, huge projects, I think, that, that we're interested in. Certainly, we're interested in, um, Stafford Road, the Borland Road development down the road is, is an option. And it'd be nice, I think, to have seed money set aside for that use, whatever that use might- And I'm not proposing that's what it's for, I'm just throwing out some examples of, of what we have, and that might be useful to have that money on the side.
Just a side note, on the sweet drive sidewalks, uh, that's a perfect community development block grant request. Tiger does it year after year after year. That's how Tiger gets its sidewalks done, is through community development block grant.
Yeah.
And that's, that, that place, that is in a perfect census tract for a community development block grant.
Well, and, you know, we, as you know, we just are utilizing CDBG funds for the, um, Sagert Street, and it, the sweet drive sidewalks are also on the Tuolton moving forward, and, uh, we plan to leverage, um, the grant funds again on that. So, there are other funding sources to do that.
Yep, all right. That's trail connections, so if people vote for the Metros Parks and Rec Fund, we'll see. All right, so I have a feeling we have, oh.
Yeah, no, I would just, um, like to concur and say I would like to set the money aside for future urban renewal planning and feasibility and take a look at that. And I also just wanted to mention, I don't think it's even gonna be an option, but the idea of paving the Hannigan Lot, it soaks ridiculously expensive. I don't, I would never even want to talk about taking on a project like that unless we had, like, planned it to a T so that the best and highest use for that piece of property is to do that. I don't even, I mean, no offense, but I don't even really think that should even be on the list right now without something to support it, so, thank you.
Okay.
That was my, uh, one cent.
Maria?
Oh, I'm totally in agreement with, um, everyone else. We, we should move the money. We should, option one, it's just, makes sense.
Robert?
Just supplemental to Councillor Grimes, Councillor President Grimes' comment. Um, I sit on the core area parking board, and they do a survey twice a year in terms of the capacity of the parking lots. And other than, I'm gonna get this wrong, the lot next to the hot seat, blue lot, white lot?
Green lot.
Green lot. The ones on the west side of town are pretty sparsely used, and so there's plenty of parking capacity.
It's a colorblind.
So, instead of, you know, thinking about, uh, putting more parking out there where we don't need it, potentially maybe look at either making that to build or selling it, uh, and somebody would have to put parking underneath it anyway, since it's in the floodplain. So I have just a thought for the future.
All right. So you have what you need for that, Charlie?
Well, that part, so now we're gonna move on to-
Move on to the next one, right?
Yes, yes, thank you for that direction, much appreciated.
All right.
So, thank you for your quick and decisive action. That was great. The Leviton Tax Increment District's, uh, purpose was to provide infrastructure and services to support industrial development. Its main goal was to facilitate the full industrial development of the area by removing blighting influences and by providing public improvements. It has more in the bank, so, a little bit more to think about in terms of thinking of future projects, so about $3.7 million. And the recommendation from staff is to be targeted to enhance.
So, Leviton is gonna be a much broader and more detailed conversation than I think Central Urban Renewal District will be, or was. Currently, there are four goals, sub-goals, of the Leviton Tax Increment Finance District, and it all centers around industrial development and transportation and infrastructure. However, we've identified some things with our internal stakeholders, as well as what would be the broader scheme of things in Leviton District. So transportation would be one section for an area which would be, uh, including traffic signals on Herman and 118th. And, I'm gonna get this wrong, so I'm not gonna say, but Jeff has identified a few places where traffic signals would be able to be installed. And then, there have been discussions around a park and ride somewhere located in the district. And, uh, through the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which the Tonkin Trail goes through, a primary portion of the industrial area, parks, trails, and beautification. And this would require, uh, a new goal, which would be an amendment to the plan. But then it would have to be feasibility study, so forth and so on. So basically, tonight is to get a general idea of kind of identified projects. I'm gonna let Elaine kind of facilitate that conversation, but the timeline, there is no timeline. And, so it would include amend the plans, reduce the district to project areas, complete the project, and close the district. It is the position of staff to utilize the funds that are currently in Leviton to benefit the district. So we would like to spend the money somewhere in the district. What we do want council to be, or the commission and council to be aware of is if urban renewal is a future use or tool for whatever policy or priorities they have moving forward, that they understand we can shrink the districts, as well as closing the urban renewal district of the central district. That way, you have a larger share to work with moving forward, 'cause you can only add 25% of your landmass to urban renewal. So, turn that over back to the White.
So one of the requirements of the statute is that you may only spend urban renewal money in an urban renewal area, so you would keep in wherever your project area is, just as Jonathan said, but you could remove everything else. The other kind of tricky thing might be in, um, I have to talk with your city attorney, existing urban renewal areas are supposed to be contiguous. And so, that would be something we would have to think about on the remaining area. And I've recently just done an amendment for the city of Salem on an area that is closed, not taking tax increment, and they decided to still keep complying with that issue of contiguous. So that's something else that, depending on where you might think you want to spend funds and what you might want to do, we may have to tie an area together, but you could eliminate everything else so that you could use that in the future. So in, in terms of the priorities, I, I think Councillor Morrison had a really good point in the last area, which is, um, where do you have money where you can do these projects with another fund, and where don't you? So in terms of looking at your transportation, park and ride, and traffic signals, I guess one of the questions might be, are there TSP funds or other funds that could be used for those, or, or not? And the same question on your parks, trails, and beautification, whether there are other funds. That would be, I think, if I were looking at it, my question in terms of helping to winnow down what projects might be important.
And council, I realize that this is gonna be a broad conversation tonight, so it's okay if there are just ideas percolating for the rest of the session. We don't have to have a discussion, uh, or a decision regarding any specific action, but it would give staff an idea of where to start putting time and resources moving forward.
Go ahead.
This is a quick, just kind of detailed question that, um, on the Tonkin Trail system, you've got there that it requires a new goal, but Goal Three was to provide bike paths as appropriate. So could it tie into that goal, or would we actually need a separate goal for that?
So, um, in the Leviton, um, district, it is to improve traffic and transportation. So in the Leavitton District, it is to improve traffic and transportation. So we would have to confer with Sean if a specific type of development would fit that. And we've kind of bounced that idea back and forth and it might, but we would want to take an extended opportunity to look at that.
And that shouldn't be a reason for deciding not to move ahead. It's easy to add a new goal. So that's just a detail. But if there is a specific project you want, there is a method for making that kind of amendment.
Paul?
So now you have me completely confused because you just said, we have to spend the money within the district.
Mm-hmm.
But we previously said we could use money from the district to spend on another project to research a district. That's too competitive, not competitive, but.
You, the only provision for not spending the money within the district is to look at a new district.
And then you could transfer the money to the new district?
Right. Um, no.
No.
You can do planning for a new district. That's the only provision in the statute for using money outside of a district.
Got it. Okay.
So I don't think you need $3.7 million to look at.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, I just wanted to clarify a point. So then my, my next comment is if, if I'm looking at the map and maybe you want to go, go back to it, but the Tonkin Trail system, how does that get into that district? Because that's really over on, that's outside the district, isn't it?
From what Ross and has stated to us is a trail, and I don't know if it's part of the Tonkin Trail system, will go up through the industrial district.
It, it tracks 124th. And so 124th is in the Leavitton District.
Right here.
But then in that case, if we, and I'm not putting words anyone's own, I'm just talking out loud here. So if we did spend all the money to develop a Tonkin Trail within that district, we'd basically have a trail that ends before it actually gets to Tonkin? Am I understanding that correctly then? Because it wouldn't, we couldn't go beyond TS Highway?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you could do, however, this is just brainstorming, you could amend the area of the plan first, include more of the Tonkin Trail.
Like pull that, that line down.
The water down here.
Down 124th.
Right. As long as you stay within the statutory requirement that you may not add more than 20% of the original plan area.
20 or 25.
For adding to an area is 20%. You can have 25% of your total city area. So you, yeah, it's, it's all very confusing.
Yeah.
So you could do that. And then you could go ahead in a subsequent amendment, get rid of the rest of the area if that's where you're going to spend your money.
Other questions? Comments?
Could we talk a little more about contiguous areas?
Yes.
I didn't catch that last time.
So although the statute doesn't explicitly say all areas have to be contiguous, legal counsel, whenever I have asked this question, have given advice that an urban renewal area has to be contiguous. One, so the Leavitton area all has to all touch each other. The Curd area has to all touch each other. You could take your Curd area and have another area that's four blocks up the other way, but you connect it through a wide right-of-way, that makes it contiguous.
Okay, gotcha.
So I just, I'm doing an urban renewal plan in the city of Madras right now. The city corridor is right here, the commercial corridor. The area is like this all around the city because we're doing a housing urban renewal area to incentivize housing. But we've attached it everywhere to right-of-way.
Robert?
Technical question. Is there any way to reactivate the taxing district?
No.
No? Okay. So any investments we make at this point, we're not going to see tax advantage from?
No.
Okay.
Well, yes. All of that area is spinning off taxes to all the taxing districts. So if you do a project that, let's say you do a development project with a developer who's going to come in and build something new, that will go on the tax rolls and you, the city, as well as everybody else, will receive benefit from that.
Right. But the tax revenue isn't pigeonholed into the district anymore?
It's not.
Okay. So if that's the context, then what for project areas, we seem a little vague. I know we've talked about the park and ride piece across the street from the office complex and the bit on the Tonkin Trail that I just heard there. So if we were to reduce the district size based on those projects, has anyone done a back of the napkin on how much that reduces it? I mean, I know, I know we can only add up 20%, but how much are we taking away in terms of our 25 or adding to the potential of a future 25?
So currently, both districts together equal 13.7% of our total landmass. Now, I haven't broken it down between what's what, but it would substantially increase your allowance.
So if we had a narrowly defined project for the Leavitton District, we'd probably be under 5% total city area or considerably less than that?
If you remove Curd?
Yes.
Yeah. I can confidently say that one.
Okay. All right. And we have 3 point, what, million dollars?
Six.
3.6? Okay. And do we have any estimates? I mean, has anybody looked at the real estate trend to figure out what that parcel's worth or no?
But if that's, and that's why we're here tonight. So if, if that is.
Just spitballing.
Yeah. If that is the direction currently of council, we can definitely go and start researching that.
Has there been outreach to the stakeholders in Leavitton to say, what else would you like done here? And then if so, what is the mental result of that?
So Aquila and I have talked about if council has an idea, we were going to reach out to the Leavitton District to see if that's something that they wish might be implemented or constructed. But we wanted to get a sense of kind of where council was tonight before we started outreach to the Leavitton folks. Just to kind of have an idea of, you know, one, where we're at as the city, but also where they're at as a business. And then that way, we can bring back to you, this is what we've heard. How does that mesh with the Tonkin Trail or the park and ride or a potential traffic improvement for a traffic signal?
Okay. Well, my perspective, and you're free to take it or leave it, would be to form sort of a plan to say, we're going to spend this money and go out to the stakeholders out there and say, here are a few ideas. We have, what are your ideas? Take the best of them, price it out, see if we can do it. And then that will instruct where we go in terms of reducing the district and later closing it.
Okay.
So would your ideas be limited to this or?
No, I'd like to see what the folks out in Leavitton have to say. They're the ones who live and work out there, well, work out there, and would have the best idea about, you know, whatever low hanging fruit might be out there for us to make some good investments in and spend the money as it was intended.
Nancy?
Yeah. And I was, along that same line, I concur because we had a gentleman come that has property out there and spoke to us a couple of months ago, I believe, about the sense of sort of like the disconnect and isolation of being out there and how they would really like to see something that sort of connects that area with Tuwalton and, and, you know, sort of bridges the industrial and business areas that we have in the city so that they didn't feel, you know, they didn't feel like they had a gateway or an entryway or something that, you know, talked about being part of the city. So I might go back and contact that gentleman or look at the notes of some of the things that he said because I thought they were pretty salient points. And the other thing I think I'd like to add to the list, but it wouldn't supersede what the business owners themselves might say, but I really think the idea of the park and ride should really be looked into. I would like to have that be kind of high on the list if possible. Because I think that's an important thing in being able to take care of that now. I think we'd say it was a lot of money then down the road.
Paul?
So once again, Counsel President Grimes is reading my notes. I really want to follow up on her comment because I was going to make the same thing. We did have a gentleman and I don't know if you were at the meeting, but he talked about the inability really to make that property work the way it was intended to work because of, if I understood him correctly, there were, there were traffic issues. There were some other problems. So it'd be really interesting to see what, and with 3.6 million, we actually could do something down in that area to enhance that, that work area into something a little bit more better than what ended up we had. Because what we have right now apparently is not as good as a lot of the folks down there envisioned it. So maybe we can do a do-over. And I love the idea of a park and ride. I know the one we have, the current one we have in our city, actually both of them are literally overloaded. And anything we can do to limit cars coming up 124th and the Salt Creek Parkway, I'm, I'm all in because our neighborhood's getting overridden with cars.
Other comments? Bridget?
Thanks for your presentation and your, all your work on it. I think the transportation ideas, we have a lot of transportation issues in this city. So those are important and I think they're important to workers and people working in the area. And the parks and trails and beautification for people that work here in Tuwalton also are important for people's well-being and also the well-being of the environment. And that's another question I've got. I don't know exactly, like I almost feel like I would like a field trip of where we're talking about to understand it better. I know that there's wetlands all throughout our area here. And if there's a way of elevating, the opportunity for people to enjoy that while they're taking breaks at work, while they're getting to and from work, and also while we're thinking about what we're doing in a mindful way, those concerns come up for me. There's a group of people that film around here, that film wildlife, birds and things like that. And they're always excuse the traffic noise. So the two things live like that. And it's interesting that it's up here like this. And I appreciate also understanding the flexibility that we can have by planning something out well, changing the shape of what this looks like as far as a district goes so that we can create something that is functional and utilize the money in an efficient, effective way for something that makes sense and meets the goals of the people working and also moving through the area and the people living in the surrounding area. So, thank you.
Pardon my ignorance, but I'm, I'm, my, I'm trying to vision this park and ride and I'm thinking people come into our town. So I'm kind of confused.
It'd be on the corner across from 124th Office Building or 99W.
Oh, okay. So that makes sense.
With a building rock, the rock and gravel guy is.
Okay.
That area.
Personally, I'd like to see what Counselor Kellogg suggested is reaching out to that community or, you know, that area and seeing what their ideas are. So we're getting real great feedback on what they want.
Maria?
Yeah, no, I agree with the getting, getting feedback from the community there. I, I was driving by there and there's a refuge park. I think that's where, right. So I walk around that area and definitely needs something that attracts more, I don't know, maybe businesses or something. But I know which, exactly what area we're talking about. It does need something that will make it, I don't know, alive. I mean, it's, it's just, it does look pretty dark too, like do, a little, little gloomy. But yeah, and reach out to the businesses and the people who live around there and see what they want to, what they want in the future for their own community.
All right. Just a couple of comments for me, for myself. Obviously, yes, talk to the companies that are in the, the area right there. I'm intrigued by the parks, trails, and beautification. One, because several of us went out when Metro announced the purchase of that piece of land next to Pony Ridge and the future trail they have envisioned there. This trail would connect to that trail. So it's perfect segue to get you across 99, to get you into Tuwalton Refuge, Tuwalton Wildlife Refuge. It also solves, you know, back when we had our debates with the business community about SDCs, about building parks and recreation and commercial areas. You know, the lack of that here is us putting up and showing that we are going to do that. We are going to follow up and put in Parks, Rec, a trail system that those folks can get out of work, you know, jump on their bike and possibly ride to the refuge, chill out, come back, or head down towards Wilsonville. Because eventually, this Tonkin Trail is supposed to go to Wilsonville all the way to Beaverton, once completed. So I'm intrigued by that idea about doing that. On the park and ride side, I'm kind of confused. Why would we buy it and not Trimat? Or would we sell it to Trimat? How's that work?
Yeah, good, great question. It's a great question.
Yeah. I mean, Trimat is their lot. Why wouldn't they buy or can we buy it then market up and sell it to them?
Lease it to them.
Or lease it to them. Yeah. I mean, that's what my question with the, the park and ride is, to me, that's a Trimat asset and a city asset. Obviously, we'd want them to get, I'd love to have one there. We all know from years ago, Kathy Newcomb, a longtime resident, this has been her, one of her charges to have that Tuwalton park and ride out there on 99W. So my, you know, to me, the priority would be find out what the folks in the district would like, Parks and Rec, and then see what's involved with the park and ride. But to me, it's more of a Trimat thing than ours. I'd rather see the money go into a, a couple pocket parks, the trail, and eventually getting that connected across 99. Because we already have the trail where the apartment complex is for the Tuwalton River Trail. So we could connect these all up. So it'd be kind of nice up there. And then maybe, like you're saying, have a nice entryway, you know, come down 124th and 3 million might cover a big chunk of it.
I, I too, I just want to say one other thing because when you talk about the business, no, because, no, because I think too, there's a lot of people and businesses and stuff. I just always think of like softball leagues and different kinds of things that people can do to build community and with their workpeople. And so, yeah.
So you need, have what you need, Cheryl?
I, I think so. Let me just recap. So the priority is to spend the money in the, in the Leavitton District. Talk to stakeholders, including the gentleman, and I just can't remember his name, that.
Property management, something property management.
Yeah.
Is it, is that Pacific?
Kevin.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Yes, he came and, and talked about a monument sign there. But talk to stakeholders. Like the idea of the trail. And then consider a field trip out there. Kind of a tactile thing. So, does that, that cover it?
Cover it.
Good.
Paul?
To the mayor's point, clarification on exactly how a park and ride would, you know, who's doing what. Because I'm, I was assuming that we're, we're providing seed money and an indication that that's what our city wants, but the majority of it would be paid for. And that was naive of me to think that, knowing the way Trimat works. So I apologize for that. But I would definitely like clarification on that.
Yeah. And we can certainly start doing some, you know, put our feelers out. The city attorney just mentioned that we might be able to leverage with Trimat. Like we, we buy a park and ride and they're able to do things in other parts outside the district.
Right. Some matching funds kind of thing.
Uh-huh.
All right. All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, for your direction.
Thank you.
This was great. Yes, it was wonderful.
All right. So shoot back up to the agenda here. I think we're doing 2040, correct? Next?
Yes. So now on to the next meeting discussion.
And we're right on schedule. Woo-hoo!
Yes, you are.
All right. So 12 and 40, 12 to 2040 update. Please. Clear my stuff out of here. Welcome.
Thank you. While we get settled here, talk, talk amongst yourselves. Are we ready?
Good evening.
Welcome. How are you Karen and Steve?
Good evening, mayor and counselors. My name is Karen Pearl Fox. I'm a senior planner for the city of Tuwalton. And I'm the project manager for Tuwalton 2040. At the table with me to the right is Steve Koper, planning manager, and Jonathan Taylor, our economic development manager, who you just heard a lot from. Tonight, we bring you a continuation of the update on the Tuwalton 2040 project that we started part one on September 23. Say, I wanted to just mention, so just a few of you, I think, were not here perhaps. On September 23, what we covered was the takeaways on the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunity analysis. The, we, we talked about the process that the community advisory. Advisory Committee went through to develop the strategies for both the housing and economic development. And we heard directly from the Community Advisory Committee's liaisons, and that was Daniel Bachhuer and Bryce Payne, about their priorities and kind of giving a summary of the work that the CAC did. And we reviewed the next steps leading toward the prioritization plan and the completion of this phase of the project in 2019. So a little bit about what we've heard from the community. It came, the primary amount of that information came from the stakeholder interviews that was facilitated by the consultant Angelo Planning Group. And regarding where we've been over the last seven months, ECO Northwest has worked with the city project management team, which the three of us are part of, as well as Aquila Heard Ravitch and Garrett Pryor, who is our management analyst. And together, we work with the advisory committees, the Community Advisory Committee, as well as the Technical Advisory Committee, to produce a housing needs analysis and an economic opportunity analysis and strategies for both. The strategies included policy actions, which the Community Advisory Committee had suggested and prioritized. So when we get to next steps, we'll talk about the fall/winter schedule and the remainder of the project. And Steve, we'll talk a little bit about some additional steps related to that.
Thank you, Karen. So as Karen mentioned, we did a lot of stakeholder outreach. We started in spring of this year with kickoff advisory committee outreach meeting with the Planning Commission, Architectural Review Board, Parks Advisory Committee, Arts Advisory Committee, and a representative from our Youth Advisory Committee. We also did 15 individual or small group hour-long stakeholder interviews. And then we also presented to six of the citizen involvement organizations, the Library Advisory Committee, and the Diversity Task Force. All along the way, we had openings for public comments electronically, so we have those that we received via email and then online via survey. We also held open houses, or open house events in July at some existing city events. And then we had our under-one-roof open house event in September of 2019. And so we talked about this a little bit last time, but what we heard from the community, you have your Wordle or Word Cloud up here, depending on which term you prefer. So those stakeholders shared their thoughts on a wide range of topics. The two top topics were housing and livability, transportation and parking. So what we heard from folks overall is that they really liked living in Toowalton. They wanted to maintain their existing levels of livability, but add more housing-type diversity, as well as add affordable housing. We also heard that people wanted to improve walkability and transit here in the city, and then also a need to provide the right amount of parking. What that is open for debate. We also heard other topic areas, civic identity in downtown. So we heard our urban renewal presentation just preceding this, this idea that perhaps there would need to be some kind of planning to do a downtown urban renewal district. And so we heard some of the same themes that the mayor mentioned as far as people feeling like the commons was underutilized and so forth. We heard a bunch of other things like parks, open space environment, trails, all those kinds of things. And then we'll have that information summarized for you in the final report.
So the housing needs analysis and the development of accompanying housing strategies with actions set the stage for Community Advisory Committee to develop and prioritize suggestions for housing in Toowalton. This is a summary of the current data that we have on the total billable lands. So you'll notice that there is a difference between what you've seen previously. 244 acres is the current figure, and over 90% of this is zone low or medium-low density residential. The difference is that we actually had a TAC member who prompted our, us and our consultant to take a second look at the partially vacant land. And after, after that second look, which ECO Northwest spent some time with, they determined that those parcels, the majority of those parcels did not actually qualify for, to be in the category of partially vacant. So thus, the number of acres was reduced accordingly, and the percentage of which is zone low and low-medium changed. So we're, we're very thankful that we were able to catch that, and that is, that is what we're intending to go forward with, with the final draft of the HNA. Just to give you a little bit of more information about what the impact there is, so by plan designation, that changes, that basically reduced seven fewer buildable acres to a total of 155 buildable acres. And for medium-low density, it reduced by 72 fewer buildable acres to a new total of 70 buildable acres. The remainder of the plan designations did not change, so medium-high density and high-density residential did not change. So the most significant figure was the one that reduced the medium-low density residential. Land availability is based on that 244 buildable acres, Metro's forecast, and also the future housing mix. So that leaves us still with a surplus, though it's smaller. It's a surplus of 37 acres of land zone low and low-medium residential, and we still have the same deficit of 11 acres of medium-high and high, high residential that we had previously. Just a quick note there on the housing affordability, nothing's changed there. We have 22% of our homeowners and 56% of our renters' households pay more than 30% of their income in housing So above is the broad categories of housing policy strategies that the, the Community Advisory Committee used to organize their strategy suggestions. And below that is the three-part question that was asked, the overall question that was asked to the Community Advisory Committee in doing their work on the strategies. This is basically a look at the actions under a number of the different strategies that rose to the top for the Community Advisory Committee, so these are their high priority items. And I'm sure you had a look at them. If you have any questions, I'll give you a moment to ask. Okay, thank you.
So what we're looking for from the council, I believe, is to go back to the previous slide. I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking for, does any of these resonate? Kind of, kind of, they feel to you? Do any rise to the top? Are there any that are missing or stand out that don't fit? We're not gonna ask you to prioritize these, but just hearing your kind of direction of, like, do these look like they kind of fit or what's missing, given what the data shows?
So you want to discussion now, or at the end?
I think so. Yeah, yeah, we have, we have probably 10 minutes to, 10 or 15 minutes to talk about that.
Open the floor.
So I, I attended mini-meeting just to learn a little bit more about what each one of these categories or strategies mean. So very quickly, if you can just let us know what adequate land supply means, I mean, like, or an example within the community, what that means for redevelopment opportunities. I didn't know what that meant until it was explained to me, and I'm like, so I think for the sake of everyone to hear the message of what that means, it would be great for us to kind of start thinking which direction to go. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So kind of a little more detailed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. So I think maybe just starting back a couple of slides. And so, I mean, we have the data, which provides us some facts, right? We have a surplus of low-density and medium-low density residential land. We have a deficit of higher density residential land. So that's kind of like the baseline. Those are the facts. And so the strategies are in part, like, what are, what are strategies to deal with those facts? How would we do that? And so adequate land supply, the example would be, you know, there's two main ways to go, would be to increase density, allow for more units to be built on a piece of land as currently, or to expand the city boundary and get more land to increase the unit count and meet those acres and number of units in the different zoning types. Does that make sense so far? And then same thing for housing type variety. We're looking at the fact that our, going back to the data, that our housing mix is, you know, lower on the townhome style of development and a little bit lower on the multifamily. And so we're saying that our goal is to have higher amounts of those. And so then a strategy to deal with that fact is to have increased housing type variety. Good so far? Okay. And then, and then again, same thing, it's the facts, that as you saw, 22% of renter households and, or excuse me, 22% of homeowners and 56% of renters are struggling to pay their bills. And so then you have a strategy that talks about looking at ways to address that affordability gap. Sure, like lever, and so, I mean, we can get into the, the next slide has a bunch of tools that are kind of more specific examples of, of what they are, but I'm just keeping it at a high level for the moment, and then we can do the same exercise on the next set of slides if, if you wish. And then funding tools kind of ties in with that same, it's a slightly different strategy, but it's the same idea, which is that we'd be at the city either partnering with groups like Washington County that has available funds for them, or seeking other kind of funding opportunities, whether that would be some, some modification or SDC program, or having a, having a city tax abatement program, something like that. So those are potential funding tools. Again, they're dealing with the data and the facts that we don't have affordable housing for certain groups of people. Redevelopment opportunities is kind of a blend, I guess, of, of both of those facts, where we're saying, okay, adequate land supply is number one, but it's kind of a little bit of a spin on number one, which is that in addition to looking for more land or dens, or densification, we also might just look at taking land that is underutilized and, and finding a way to encourage it to build at the higher density. And so that's where you get some of these conversations, like, are the parking requirements too high, and that's why it didn't build to its highest and best use? Or is there the flood plain? And can we do something creative to get around those things? And then the last thing is the housing, transportation, and other connections. And so this kind of ties back in, and I think this fact kind of transcends both the housing policy strategies and this one, but we have, I think it's 7% of folks both live and work in Toowalton. And so there's kind of, I mean, there's an idea of can we change that and help improve the traffic picture where people aren't commuting through town, so on and so forth. And then I think just it came out of this general idea of the fact that if we were to make changes, like increase the density, or do new zoning in a new area, we'd also need to make sure our transportation plans at the city are, are accepting of those changes, right? So we'd have to, we'd have to integrate those two together, and so we can't lose sight of that other piece. So that's.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions from folks who are on this one?
You've heard this from me before, but I'm wondering, you know, we, we, I don't think the people necessarily that, like, first-time homebuyers, we don't, we just don't have these small houses, like, and I'm thinking one level, because I, I think it'd be great if we could have communities where we could have seniors that want smaller homes, and then first-time homebuyers that can have homes. So I don't know that that necessarily falls under affordability, because I think it's like 70 or 75 grand, which is really not affordable for a Toowalton house. But would that fall under housing type variety and then the transportation? Because that would probably
Yeah.
give some of these people the ability to live here and work close to their home.
Absolutely. So that's a good one. I'll go to the next slide and maybe just talk through a little bit of the potential policy actions and just use your example as an example. So if we say the high-level strategy is that we want a greater diversity of housing types, then it might be something, for example, like, we would look at updating, so one of the actions is specifically, I think it's updating, updating our code to, which one is it? Yeah, so, I mean, identify districts within Toowalton, it's the fourth one from the bottom. Identify districts within Toowalton with opportunities for redevelopment, for housing and employment uses. And so, I mean, and then you'd have a sub-actual action from that. So, I mean, if you think of this in terms of like, the comp plan, so this is feeding into our comp plan update, the strategies are almost like goals, and then these are policies. And then you might actually have an action, which would be a development code, where we would encourage a tiny home community or a cottage cluster or something based on what you're talking about, right? So that's kind of the flow of this information, is that that's what it's feeding into. So I think everyone's seen these by now, read through them one by one. Anyone have any questions on these?
Go ahead.
So we've, we've outlined low income, and there's three projects in the city that have potential. And I've had this discussion before with you folks. In order to get affordable housing, which is different than low-income housing, we would need a housing cost at 225,000 in round numbers. That's three times the median income of the city as defined by the Portland Realtors and the Portland Home Builders Association. The only way you do that, there's only one single way to do that. And Steve, you hit it right on, on the nose. And again, we've had this discussion, you have to raise density. And so my question is how can we set policy? Because as I understand it, there is some state law that restricts what we can do with respect to density to get to the magic number of 12 units per acre. And I don't know why that's a magic number, because I have not really gone into the weeds with the developers, but that's the magic number to get your 1,100 to 1,400 square-foot house that will retail for around 250. And again, that's not 225, but as the Home Builders Association said, that's close enough, and if you can get there, we'll take it. Because these SDC fees, we've already seen now a reduction in the number of homes built over Horizon from 249 to 239 because of the increase in the fees. They're not reducing the square footage because they don't want to pay for additional units, because those additional units cause fees. Again, policy issues, how do we work through that? And we love to throw out, well, we can do an exception, but the homebuilder who's doing the low-income housing would like to do, sorry, would, and has proposed to do low-income next to Horizon Church, I talked to her, because she was the one that you're, and by the way, great summer workshop back in September, I attended that. I really loved what I heard. I loved the participation you had from some, truly some experts. But one of them was from the nonprofit who said, "We don't even bother applying for an exemption on parking because it takes too long." And I've had that on other issues, conversations, the high school, they, they had an issue, and I asked the principal, "Why don't you just apply for an exemption?" I mean, we would probably have given you that. He said, "It takes too long. It's not worth the hassle." And so you run into that, where you, we have to be able to be proactive on this. We can't say we're going to give some kind of a cut deal on SDCs. We have to set out a policy that says if you do that, and this is my opinion only, and I, this is open for debate, but you have to set down these guidelines of this is what we can do, and this is what you then can do if, if you're willing to follow these guidelines. And we have to be proactive and set the parking restrictions in advance. We have to be proactive, and if we're going to cut SDCs for affordable housing, it has to be in the code, so that they're not spending two years trying to get four votes to get where we want to be with affordable housing. And so, and I don't know how we get beyond, I understand that we're really bound by that 8.6 per acre for the most part, although I guess if we change the density, but if we change the density of the Salt Creek, God forbid what Wilsonville will do, they're already upset over 40 acres. I'm gonna imagine what happens if we did the whole development, higher density. So I, I don't know the answers. I'm gonna leave that to you guys to figure out how to, how to propose that policy and how to propose those kind of guidelines, so that we can get to where I think we all want to be, which is affordable housing, smaller units that, you know, senior citizens and first-time homebuyers. That, that's what they need and that's what they want. And as you can see from the writing, you have only 55% of Toowalton is homeowners. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know what it compares to the rest of the cities, but it's considerably lower than Washington County. And so that's an issue, and a problem, and that has to do with the fact, I'm convinced, of our high home prices.
No, it's, I think, I don't know if this, tell me if this ties in or not, in our discussions, yours, mine, and Robert's, about, you know, relooking, I mean, I know I'll get, go into the weeds here, but strategy wise, you know, one of the strategies is relooking in how we do developments in the town and have a comprehensive plan and go from there. I mean, that's a lot of stuff Paul's mentioning is, could be envisioned in a comprehensive plan, and we change how we do development here in the future to get to the places that Paul's mentioning, correct?
Yep. Yeah, and I mean, I think the, I mean, I think this provides the springboard to do that.
Thank you. So, so going back, I guess, from Sherilyn's question on page eight here, do you want feedback on this or answers to the questions at the below or, or if we're missing something? People think this covers it, and this is in no order, correct?
Right.
Right, just disregard the one through six and include, they're just bullets. Valerie?
So the idea of a comprehensive plan, would that be something to be added to this or would that be something we do after?
So, I mean, the, the way our city is right now is we have a comprehensive plan, it's part of the development code, and so it, it operates functionally similar to what I'm describing where there are goals and policies. And so it'd be, there is a conversation about whether or not it makes sense to take the comp plan out of the development code, which is a little bit of a separate conversation. I think the idea being though, that either way we would update the goals and policies is some of the goals and policies in the plan are, are actually complementary with what I'm hearing the council's vision is for the future. Some are distinctly not. And so, you know, between the visioning that the previous council and other community members did last in 2014, and then with this work together, I mean, I think that we have a pretty good base to go into that work next.
Because to me, the comprehensive plan is an action that's driven by one of these strategies. Because the whole idea is for us to come up with strategies on homes and economic development, we're ensuring these strategies, and then the next step after this is hanging actions off some of those strategies to get to that goal, correct?
That's correct. And I think, I mean, just to maybe even boil down Sherilyn's question, these questions a little further is like, did we get it right? Is there something that we would, that we would, that you would want us to change or go back and look at again before the council accepts this concept overall and that we move on to that next phase of updating the comp plan policies? Because of course, there's still opportunity, the council has to approve the update of the comp plan, there's opportunity to tweak these, we're not necessarily suggesting that these are accepted wholesale or anything to that effect, these are what was recommended to you by the community advisory committee. And so we're really just looking for, are we headed in the right direction before we put in more work?
Bridget?
When I look, when I look at these, I always, I, I just want to be really clear, the way that I think about these, you can have different types of housing and, but if you have a strong market, it doesn't mean that's going to be more affordable. So if you buy a condo in the Pearl, it's, so if, I think it's really important from a real estate perspective for people to start thinking about things in a way, with the problem that we're really trying to solve here is increasing the supply of housing. And then affordability is a second conversation. In my mind, it's important to think about that because the market's not going to drive affordable housing in our area, so we're going to have to look at programs and money from outside. So if those things are important to people in Twalton, to think about those things very clearly is important. The other thing that I want to be really clear about from my perspective as well is that we had one discussion at one time about talking about height limits and reducing height limits.
Raising them.
And yes, reducing the limits means raising them. So, so I, I, I like thinking creatively about these kinds of things around mixed use, around thinking about what the future of our city looks like if we have more density and the traffic, and we've talked about it in traffic planning. But also, I mean, I've lived in areas with urban sprawl and we have, you know, we have this fertile valley and then we have desert and other things like that. So how we're thinking about using land and, and thinking about it mindfully is another piece of that. And, I mean, when you're talking about little cottages and stuff, in certain ways, it makes a lot of sense, but also you have a lot of infrastructure going to small things. So if you're trying to get more units into one space, there.
Bigger pipes.
Yeah, I mean, you have bigger pipes and, and then the other thing that we haven't really talked about, which I think is important to talk about as well, is making sure with all the new infrastructure, with the land adding that we're doing and the other things that we're talking about, when we're getting our income as a city from property taxes and then we change those, those measures, how it impacts our budget and how we're thinking about how we manage our tax base while we're managing growth and how much we're covering and where our police are going and how, you know, all that kind of stuff. So those are the things that come up in my mind. I really appreciate the work, I sat in on one of the committee meetings and there were so many people from the community there, there were divergent perspectives, there's a lot of opportunity to talk about this, not everyone agrees with each other on this, it's a sensitive issue about how people feel about where they live. And home is a touchstone for all of us, so I appreciate the time and the effort that you guys have put into doing it and the adjustment of the numbers. Thanks.
Maria, or is Nancy first?
Oh, no, go ahead. Okay. So I know you're one direction from us on what focus and where I, when I, in one of the conversations, I talked about in addition to what Councilor Brooks is saying about building up versus, you know, having a limit, I like the idea of exploring what we already have and try to revitalize that. So for instance, the redevelopment opportunities where there's, you know, I think it was 30 years ago when they zone, or they quoted that and more than that, and it looks like 1980. So maybe redevelop that and make it into a more 2019 kind of look. So, and I like the mixed use idea where you have businesses on the bottom and maybe build up and have homes or condos or things like that. I, I like to explore that because we already have the land, it's here already. That's, that was one of the things that I was talking, I was thinking about when I was reading this. And also the, obviously we do need affordability housing and, and I hope that as we acquire land in the future, that's what the new development could be used for, affordability and homes that are more like cottage and mixed, multi-generational.
Nancy?
Thank you. When we're looking at the, the overall housing policy strategies, I, I want to call out, maybe make it number seven, I guess, I want to call out and separate the idea of senior housing as its own, as its own priority. Because housing type variety, I, obviously that would cover a lot of things, but I think that the idea of senior housing is a little more unique because a lot of the more like high density, cost effective ways of, of building don't always necessarily make a good living situation for the seniors. And I want to make sure that, you know, as we're looking at the different strata of potential residents in the city, I want to make sure that that stays its own high priority portion of our community.
And I, and I wholeheartedly agree with that, and I think that, I think it does, it is something that, so again, within the framework of these policy strategies, I think that the housing type variety and then what you're talking about is, I mean, it was, so that's a goal. And then what you're talking about is a specific policy, if I may, that we're saying provide a range, a housing accessible to a range of ages, or if we get something more specific about what, what the actual goal, what the policy goal of, you know, what, what action would we do through the development code? And so that could be looking at areas of the city that don't have a lot of senior housing and whether or not there's code adjustments that we can make to encourage that, that type, right? So it kind of flows, oops, excuse me, flows through.
Right, I, yeah.
And so I think that that's, I think that's a good comment, and I think that we can look again more closely and see if it's in the actions level before we come back to council. But if not, I think that that's something that comes certainly in the next phase of writing the actual comp plan policies where we hone in on that, that specific age group because it is a demographic that's important here in the city.
And they have specific needs and.
Exactly.
Some, like I said, some of the strategies that we would use to make things affordable, you know, it's not going to apply in that case. And so I just want to make sure we're making that a high focus because I think that that's a really important vibrant part of our community and, you know, they need special modifications.
Anything else? You good on this slide or?
I think so.
All right.
Yep, it was great, it was great feedback, great, great conversation.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into the EOA and the, excuse me, Economic Opportunities Analysis and Economic Development Actions. We have a total buildable employment land in Twalton of 385 acres, 95% of that is zoned industrial. By using Metro's forecast, which is also covered and uncovered employment, covered means by employer, uncovered means at home employers, we're forecasted to have 53,000 employees, which is 12,850 additional more than we have today. That's assuming a 1.39% growth rate. We have maintained the status quo of our current allocation of employees, so we're remaining at industrial at 45%, retail 8%, office 45%, and government 2%. So based on Metro's forecast, land sufficiency, we have a deficit of 74 acres of land zoned industrial and a deficit of 175 acres of land zoned retail. There is an important note that we should make, none of our existing lands are tier one, which means shovel ready within the first six to 12 months. Interesting tidbit, only 2% of our businesses located in Twalton have more than 100 employees and over 93% of Twalton's workforce lives outside of Twalton. And Twalton, while it may not be startup capital, we are actually well known in the region for expansions and relocations. So basing what we just heard on the housing portion, are these the four, I'm sorry, Steve, this is your part.
No, you can take it, I'm fine.
I'll let him continue the discussions of policies, but efficient use of buildable land, redevelopment opportunities, general business retention, growth and attraction planning and economic development connections. And these are the same questions that were posed to the housing as we're posing to the economic portion, is, are these strategies resonating with council and their desired policies? Do these strategies rise to the top and are there any strategies that are missing from the mix? There you go.
Thank you.
And so I'm, I'm happy to walk through these in a similar fashion if it pleases the council.
Sure.
So efficient use of buildable land is fairly similar to the conversation in the housing context. Again, it's looking, I think, at a kind of high level, particularly in the employment context of employment density. So is the land being used for the highest and best use relative to number of employees per acre? And then there are corresponding actions that tie in with that on the next slide, which I'll get to in a moment. Redevelopment opportunities, kind of the same conversation, I think that the mixed use comment belongs in the mix there, that that's a great example of a redevelopment opportunity. So I think we're hearing so far that these first two goals at least are supported by the council. Business retention, growth and attraction, so Jonathan's probably handier with the statistics than I am, but a lot of the actual best interaction, I think we have of the business community is working on maintaining and keeping the relationships with who we've got, right? That it's not this kind of like big white whale of a business and rather it's a, as Jonathan showed on the previous slide, a bunch of smaller employers that, you know, have, are busy doing their thing, they don't have time to figure out these, these kind of things. And so that's, that's really important. And then lastly, planning and economic development connections. And so it's kind of similar to the comment on planning and transportation connections, ensuring that both our development code is supportive of economic development and then making sure that our economic development outreach and program is targeted towards making the best of what we've got. And so then similarly, we have the list of policy actions, which I won't read through, but you can see how they play out as, as being supportive of those general strategies on the slide previous. And so some of them, given the nature of them are a little more general, I'll just pick on the third one from the top. Identify opportunities to make, to make more efficient use of commercial land. So it's a, it's a policy, but it's not a, it's not a directive on how best to do that. So of course, there's the additional step, and these are probably things that'll be explored, correct me if I'm wrong, more in the development of the economic development strategy, where we would take these and refine them further. And then again, like I said, cross check them and make sure that our development code and planning processes are supportive of that policy goal.
Questions, comments?
I'll say thanks for the work and it's, it feels very similar to the last conversation. And for me, that looks like, I don't see anything that's missing, so I appreciate it.
Oh, it's quiet. When I first saw this and I discussed it before, I always hear back from folks, we get back to, on page 12, slide number 12, about deficit of 175 acres of land zoned retail and office. And we're hearing over and over, you know, they're seeing, you know, quite a bit of empty storefront in town. So a lot of folks will say, how could it be a shortage of retail acreage when I see lots and lots of stores that are empty? So we got a fair, you know, you know, that part of that's going to be the redevelopment and better using that storefront or that piece of land to attract a better class of retail in. And I've also heard, you know, quite a few people, especially on the office side, you know, how low are vacancy rates in offices? And quite a few complaints about, only a handful of landowners here in town when it comes to leasing offices. So I'd like to see more diversity of folks who are amenable to being a good landlord. So the retail and office thing intrigues me a lot again because of empty storefronts and definitely a shortage of office space because most of it's filled up, except for the gentleman who was in the poor circumstance on 124th, because that area, you know, hopefully we can fix that with the urban renewal area. But on the shovel ready, so what shovel ready is like the dirt has to be in perfect condition. So I, I look back to some of the land we have in town and down, you know, the Salt Creek's iffy, but I mean, pretty much it's getting built out right now. I'm looking to, down Twalton Short Road. So that development next to the lumberyard, was that considered shovel ready or that really wasn't? Well, that's really Sherwood, isn't it? You know what I'm talking about, where we did the tour of?
Yeah, so I'm thinking you're thinking of, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's the vacant greenfield next to Palin, correct? The 33 acres?
The one that, when they're building around the lumberyard? We got that, that whole area down near 124th, I know PG is going in one spot, but further down, that might be really Sherwood.
That is Sherwood.
Yeah, but that kind of land was, is that considered shovel ready or do you know the history of that? That wasn't?
So, no, that's not shovel ready.
That was just plain grass.
So shovel ready means all utilities.
Oh, it's built, all the infrastructure.
Connecting to the property.
Okay.
And a lot of times in our region, which we are in a deficit of tier one, both Wilson, well, not Wilsonville anymore, but Sherwood and Twalton, we don't have immediate access to infrastructure, whether that be roads, utilities, power, etc.
Because usually the builder puts it in.
Could be, yes.
And so that, you know, so other cities, I'll pick on like, I know Phoenix and Boise, when they build out, they lay that all out and they grid it out and they put everything in and they get people to move in quickly that way, correct?
Correct. They do phased development.
Right, okay. So I guess that answers other people's questions.
The next question though is, so how much is tier, like what's tier two and how much is that?
So, yeah, he gets, so.
And tier five.
Just two. There are three tiers, tier three, tier two and tier one. Tier one is within six to 12 months. Tier two has, I think, 50% and I'll give a definite definition, but it's basically saying that the infrastructure is there, ready to go or in planning process. Tier three is greenfield or brownfield that is basically unutilized and not planned for. And we do have many of those. basically unutilized and not planned for. And we do have many of those, which is good for long term, like twenty years out, but it's the tier one that Metro really kind of pushes because it's protecting the employment land. And to your, uh, question a little bit ago about, you know, the intriguing part of the retail and office, it's about combining the employment density of places like Bridgeport, Nyberg, and then the hospital, and applying that across the board to places like the, um, Hagan, Hagens, or some of the office space behind Dutch Brothers. It's, it's a broad swath, but it's about the demand of what both the office and retail, because grocery stores can employ a hundred and fifty, but they have a larger footprint, so their employment densities are lower, uh, just like that spec office, uh, warehouse that we went and visited on the site tour. That could employ twenty people, but the, the footprint is much larger, so, yeah.
Other questions? Do you have what you need on this slide or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we'll just wrap it up with next steps. So, uh, today ended the public comment period for the, our first draft of the prioritization plan. I'll just quickly note that we received about twenty comments, um, ranging from, um, just some ideas on how to, how to best formulate a comp plan update in the future. Um, and then of course, we would be remiss if we didn't mention parking again. Um, uh, and then on your slide, you have here, uh, we, a week or a little under before, uh, we meet with you again next, we will be presenting, um, the updated draft of the prioritization plan to the planning commission, who will in turn provide a recommendation to you all. And then on November twenty-fifth, we'll have the updated materials, like I mentioned, um, and we'll be asking more or less the same questions overall. Um, you know, do, is what, is the work we did, does it resonate? Um, are there any parts, like the senior housing piece that rise to the top? Um, is there anything missing? And then just overall, did we get it right? And so then ultimately, um, after November twenty-fifth, we'll be seeking direction, um, on whether or not the plan is at a stage with input from council that it is something that can be accepted by council. And then we would conclude this Tuolton twenty forty process and then move to the next steps of forming a work plan and devising how to update the comp plan and so forth.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, let me bring up. All right, so, uh, I wasn't here last time. Who gets to do the pledge this week? Robert? Paul said it's you, so yeah, okay.
Wait, wait.
All right, all right.
I believe, I believe the, um, Dale Potts will be here to
Oh, so Dale's, okay, okay.
To accept the veterans proclamation.
In, in, in case Dale doesn't come, then we have a backup. All right. I have a feeling Dale's going to be here. All right. Uh, proclamation, I'll do the vets proclamation. Uh, any questions on the consent agenda?
Oh, it's the Cub Scouts. I'm sorry, the Cub Scouts are going to be here.
We have Cub Scouts and vets. This is a crowded house tonight. All right.
Multi-generational.
There you go. All right. The Cub Scouts will be in the pledge. The vets. Yes, yep. Uh, any questions on the consent agenda? All right. You think no? All right. Gone once, gone twice. All right, so we'll start with our, uh, let me go back to here. So communications, we'll start with Robert.
One announcement, uh, tomorrow's the IBAC citizen involvement organization meeting, which Councilor Pratt and I are going to attend. So if anyone out there is listening, uh, we'd love to have you. They're looking for officers to help support the reinvigoration of their C I O. And then I'll have some more comments, but I'll save those for the council meeting on Southwest Corridor and some other things.
And it's at Marquee?
Marquee at six thirty.
Thank you.
Maria?
Oh, not much. Oh, no. Not much, really, no.
All right. Paul?
Yeah, so two things. Um, attended the, um, Clackamas County, um, C four Metro Subcommittee. They were looking at, um, regional flexible funding allocation for the metro area. And what struck me is Washington County, Multnomah County, Clackamas County, they're all on the list. And while at first glance, it appears that everything goes to Portland, um, in Clackamas County, um, one of the things that was pointed out is they generate a little over eighteen percent of the funds, and historically, they've received eighteen percent of the funds. And apparently it's the same for Washington County. I thought that was kind of interesting. Um, everybody's pushing, and as with the T twenty twenty plan, everyone's pushing their little projects, and there's a couple that are on both projects, and there'll, there's concern over T twenty twenty actually ever getting funded. And so there's, it's just an interesting debate. The second thing that I attended last week, um, because of a chance conversation with State Senator Wagner, who is also the chair of the Lake Oswego School Board, we ended up organizing, uh, Tuolton Together, ended up organizing a meeting hosted by Rachel Puzak, who's our state representative. Um, the meeting was attended by Maureen Wolf, who's the chair of the Tiger Tuolton School Board. Um, there are a couple of different, uh, school principals there. Um, I myself attended. Um, Rachel is intending to introduce some type of legislation, and it's still in the discussion, uh, stage. She's going to be reaching out to people, but basically they're high, high level of concern about vaping in the schools, um, the unbelievable number of items that are confiscated every month. Um, and it's a problem at Tiger High School, Tuolton High School, Lake Oswego High School, it's not restricted to any one little area. Um, and so we're moving forward on that, some type of legislation. Um, specifically what Wagner's office would like to do is be able to figure out how to derive from the tobacco tax that may be increased in the November twenty ballot, and also include taxing vaping products for the first time to, uh, reallocate some of that money to, um, nonprofits for the purpose of education, which is exactly what Tuolton Together does. So it was a very interesting meeting. It was very productive. We were really pleased with the attendance, as well as the, thank you for allowing the school resource officers, both Miller and Miller were there and, and contributed, um, in a very positive way. So, and that was all I did this week.
Sorry.
I went to, um, the Orpo, Oregon Recreation and Parks Association, did I get it right, Cheryl? Um, with Cheryl Lynn and Candace was there, and a lot of our park staff and other, Beth Dittman, the Chair of Tea Park, and that was very exciting, except it got stuck on my picture and it was a little embarrassing, but other than that, it was great. Then, um, we went to that Washington County Open House on that Bassell Creek extension and made a few pithy comments, I guess. And, um, I, I think that, um, the actual bridge part is what concerns me, how they're going to put foundations to support that bridge. And I don't, I didn't feel that they really were fully sure how they were going to do that, so it's pretty interesting. And, um, I went to the Martinelli C I O four meeting. Oh, it was that really rainy windy night. It was terrible. And city staff did a great, they did a great job, I thought of, you know, those people don't have the level of knowledge we have, but they did a great job of explaining and answering their questions. It was really good. But from that, um, a lot got brought up because we're like Martinelli Woods, that area, and it got brought up about traffic and concerns on the south end of Boone's Ferry. And, um, it just so happened, like on that next door, I'm als- I also got involved in this big stream. Someone's kid almost got hit by, um, at Ibach in Boone's Ferry, and it created quite this stream of conversation. So that's part of why I'm going tomorrow night, just to see if there's people with, um, input about that.
And, um, our Public Works Director Jeff Fox will be at the IBAC C I O meeting tomorrow to talk about, um, the, the transportation program, but also to be able to address what is happening on there and, uh, that intersection and
And I did put that on that next door stream, that he would be there. He was talking about the other
Good.
thing, but that he'd be available to discuss that and answer questions.
Bridgette?
Well, first of all, thanks to everyone that bought a duck. And I have my Tony up here from the Police Foundation. We, the duck raffle was a success. We funded, fully funded the Shop With The Cop, um, Christmas time event that will be coming up in December. So thanks to everybody who bought a duck, and I will be getting a duck to have up here to remind people all year, um, so that we can keep the raffle strong. Also, um, I attended the, there was a water vision for, uh, Governor Kate Brown has put out a, um, team that has going across the state and looking at a one hundred year water vision, or maybe a hundred and forty years if, um, they listen to the tribespeople that were there for seven generations. But, um, so it was a really, uh, robust conversation. It was a zero point one vision exercise. And, um, if anyone has any questions about that, I'm happy to talk about it, but it really addresses, um, water infrastructure throughout the state, water needs, and, um, built and non-built ways of managing our state's water. So I was grateful to be a part of it and met some really interesting, invested folks. Um, I also was at, what else was I at? I was, um, I wanted to also, oh, I wanted to mention that we also officially are certified as a B City USA hyphen Tuolton. That's how we have to say it officially. And we're the ninety-ninth city in the whole country. So I love that number that we made the, before the first one hundred and the eleventh city here in our state. Um, there's a lot of information that'll be coming out soon. And I wrote a preliminary article about just the importance of pollinators. I could have written maybe three articles about it. Um, I had a conversation with our parks director, Ross Hoover, about what a, uh, integrative, um, team that's working on, um, our five P program, which has to do with pesticides management. I don't remember all the Ps yet, but, um, you'll, we'll be learning more about that. So I'm just very, um, happy for our city's leadership. And I also was, oh, I was at the Building Bridges Conference. Um, and that was an amazing experience. It was, um, there are people there from different communities and coalitions, talking especially about their experience, um, being victims of hate crimes around our state. Our state has had a huge increase in hate crimes, um, over the last few years. And, um, our Attorney General was there, and she brought an entire team that is a, um, a, um, hate crime task force. Um, and they talked about the new legislation that was passed. It's already bringing impacts for, um, stronger sentences for people. There's clear definitions for police officers enforcement of hate crimes, but one of the most profound parts of that meeting was the fact that people really talked about their experiences. And then there was a lot of police officers as well that were invited into the audience and wore their uniforms and were able to also speak to the issues. And it was a remarkable dialogue and really good work. And Chief Steele was there representing our city along with Garrett, um, from Community Outreach Department. So I just want to acknowledge those, uh, that work. It was, um, you know, it was work just being in it. It was good process work. And, uh, like I said, bridges were built, um, in the moment. Uh, I, I think, I think that's, I also had an arts committee meeting. They're making decisions about possibly, um, how they're going to use funds, maybe for, um, adding something to the water, um, park aspect, but that has not been decided. Um, or there might be several small projects. We will most likely though have another storm drain project, so look for that. That will be on its way. That was a, a nice lift and, um, good outcomes. Oh, and the other thing was the Tuolton Valley Symphony came to the, um, arts meeting, and they are looking for a new home. They have been playing at the same church for years, and they want to stay in Tuolton. However, we don't have, they haven't been able to find a place that they can play and store their instruments. So these are the conversations too, where we talk about, do we ever do a community center here that supports the arts in Tuolton? They have a new facility in Sherwood now. Um, they might be forced to leave our city, and they really don't want to go. So if anyone has any ideas, um, please let the Tuolton Valley Symphony know. And if you have a hard time reaching them, you can always reach out to me. Thanks.
Nancy?
Uh, not this weekend, um, but the weekend prior, when the Oregon Ducks beat University of Washington Huskies. Not to be confused with this last weekend, when the Ducks beat Cougs, but, um, on the nineteenth, I went to the Pumpkin Regatta and, um, had a wonderful day. Um, the weather started out a little scary in the morning and then, um, cleared up and milled out as the day went. But we had a, a nice thank you, um, presentation for our sponsors and thanked them for their support. And universally, they were all very enthusiastic and very happy with the city and the sponsorship and the event itself, and we're very happy to be involved. Um, the costume contest was
Totally fun.
A lot of children. It was fantastic. A lot of children across all of the age groups, so that was very well attended. And just lots of people there. I'll be interested to see, you know, the final numbers on attendance and that type of thing. I'm sure it might be down a smidge from the year prior, um, given the weather, but it was just a lovely day. And I think the people that were there were incredibly enthusiastic. Lots of people came, adults in costumes, and lots of families that dressed up the whole families along a theme. And it just was a lovely day, and it was just really neat to see everybody out there and enjoying the event. And, um, just to see how incredibly unique it was. So I was very proud to be a part of that, and I think it was a wonderful day. It was terrific. And as always, I mean, I don't want to say it goes without saying, because we should always say thank you, but, I mean, city staff, oh my gosh, they just go way so far beyond the normal constraints of what you would expect them to do as part of their job. But I mean, facilities, just everyone is there, working as hard as they can and being so terrific to all the people that are there to enjoy the event. It's really nice to see, and it's just, makes you very proud.
Thank you.
To work for such a fabulous city with such great employees, because that does make a big difference on the feel and, and how welcome you feel at events like that, so.
Totally agree, and thank you for saying that. But I tell you, our city employees love the event. And, you know, it's so much work goes into it, and it's such a long two days, but at the end of it, it's like, people feel proud of, you know, putting it on. So thank you for saying that.
I thought it was interesting too, um, just as a sign of popularity, the amount of T-shirts that were being sold. They were just like flying out of the tent, which was great too. And I finally got my paddle or die T-shirt, so I was happy. But, um, yeah, people were really getting into it, so I think that's great. So I was very happy to be involved.
All right. Uh, so while Nancy was at the Pumpkin Regatta, I was at the Multi-City Equity Summit, uh, over in Lake Oswego, uh, news reports say there were four hundred folks that attended. Uh, it was very well attended. It was way more crowded than I thought it was going to be. Uh, first thing I asked them was not to have it on Tuolton's Pumpkin Regatta.
I talked about it.
Maybe you might want to look at the calendar next year, uh, because it was, a lot of our surrounding cities were there in force with both city employees and their police department. Uh, West Lynn, Lake Oswego, Walthenville, uh, I understood our staff was distracted with the regatta or our police department. So hopefully next year, they won't make that mistake again. Uh, they had a couple of great speakers. In the morning, they had a breakout session. The one I went to was on using relational leadership to create a culture of equity and a system designed to be equal. And a lot of that was basically realizing, uh, implicit bias in folks that you don't even realize it's there. And then the afternoon breakout session, uh, I went to the government one and listened to what Lake Oswego and West Lynn are doing as far as race and equity. They've got full-blown programs going on over there. Uh, Tigerd is focusing right now internally on their employees, kind of like Cheryl Lynn is doing, on, you know, starting internally, then working externally. Uh, but highly recommend next year. Uh, I, I know they're going to have it again next year.
But highly recommend next year, I know they're going to have it again next year, that you attend, and again, make sure it's on the regatta. Did a couple of WEAs, Westside Economic Alliance, on the 9th, I went to Senator Merkley's breakfast, and I was surprised impeachment didn't come up at all. Not at all. What the discussion was affordable housing, jobs, immigration, and the environment. So it was a great discussion that, that morning, the hour and a half flew by very quickly. Later on, on the 23rd, I attended the WEA Board Meeting. Subject there was the Southwest Corridor, they were very interested, obviously, the Westside Economic Alliance on what's going on in the Southwest Corridor, because that's when the rumors started coming out of things changing, and I'll wait for Robert to give his synopsis at the city council meeting. Big discussion there was the Washington County, the sheriff was there as well as the DA. The public safety levy is going to be on the May ballot, and it's a minimum of a three cents increase right now, possibly a five cents increase, because just the increasing costs of maintaining community justice, the jail, prisoner transport, and they want to get ahead rather than getting further and further behind. They're a little bit nervous about that, so we might be hearing from them, they're going to do the road show, that folks might push back in our rate increase, so they're going to be looking for a lot of support on that. The same bond, the same ballot would have the library renewal, but it's going to be at the same rate, so they're going to probably, both efforts will, both bond measures will have a lot of people out knocking on doors, asking for support. What was interesting that I'd never heard of before, Metro was floating the idea on the 2020 ballot, possibly in November, of something called Here Together. Have you heard about this? It's basically a $200 million package for wraparound services for the housing bond. So I'm thinking, they're going to have this on, and maybe T-2020 and all the other bond measures. They might be pushing the limit, I think, but we'll see what happens with that. The levy supplies 16% of the funding for the Sheriff's Department and DA's office, so it's a significant part of Washington County's revenue for the public safety. Coming up, Metro Mayor's Consortium was canceled, Greater Portland Inc. postponed, and it was going to be a good topic on the cost of childcare in Clackamas County, and what we can do to try to help defer those costs or decrease those costs. Got upcoming meetings with Mayor Knapp, having coffee with him, it took, what, 10 months for Mayor Knapp and I to find a date to talk, so we're going to talk with him, and then having breakfast with Senator Wagner here in the next few weeks. The transportation, oh, Rachel Prusak is putting together a transportation open house, site to be determined, but right now, we penciled in December 3rd, don't know where or what time, but she basically wants Westlin, Lake Oswego, Tualton, you know, basically her region, her area, to talk about transportation, let folks know what's going on. Basselt Creek Extension, as Valerie was mentioning, I guess this week, Washington County said they were going to start the geotech work this week to figure out where they're going to put these columns to support the bridge. Hopefully there, was it four or five, they told us, Valerie? Five of them they're going to have to plant in, so they got to find five sets of solid rock to set these things into. And then quite a few people mentioned to me, they were kind of just concerned at the lack of a traffic study, that Washington County has not really done one on the impact at Northern Walthamville, so we'll be following up on that. And then of course, the historical people always have, are in my ear about the Carlin School, making sure the Carlin School doesn't get hurt in any way. The road proposed they have goes around the Carlin School, but I've heard from the person, a couple developers who are willing to move the Carlin School at no cost to the society, and put it somewhere else, because it would save them basically buildable land, so they're willing to trade that to get the buildable land they're looking for. And that's it. So we've got a couple, three minutes before we start again. Anything else, because of your order? That's it? Good. So we'll close this work session, we'll be back at 7.